...of order, please rise for invocation by Reverend Richard Trittler, Purge Church of God.
Thank you, Mayor, for that invitation. Come in, Pauper Bluff. Let's pray. Papa, thank you for the day. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of prayer tonight. Thank you, God, for our community. And Pauper Bluff still believes in the importance of prayer. Thank you, God, for this past week when we paused as a nation and as a community to observe the National Day of Prayer. Thank the Lord for our city leaders, county leaders, who saw to it that we observed that and respected that day. And, Lord, we give you praise for the privilege of prayer. Tonight, Lord, we just ask that you would be with the City Council as they attend to the affairs of our community. Pray, God, that you would accept our thanks for our mayor and city manager and all the council members as they give of their time, Lord, to help direct and give direction to our city, Lord. We pray, God, that you'll bless in all the deliberations tonight. God, may your will be done. Thank you, Lord, for Pauper Bluff and the good place it is to raise our families, our kids, grandkids. And, Lord, for our schools and businesses. God, we thank you for the whole climate and atmosphere of Pauper Bluff. And just pray that you'll continue to bless us as a community, Lord. We believe that righteousness exalts any nation or community and sends a reproach to any people. And, Lord, we pray that we'll have righteous people, those people that'll do the right thing on behalf of our citizens of Pauper Bluff and area. God, we give you praise and thanks now again for this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roe Hall, Mr. Kurt.
Councilwoman Pearson, here. Councilman Matthews.
Here.
Councilman Brannon.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Thang.
Here.
Mary DeGerson.
Here.
Thank you. I remind all the council members, get another complaint, but I'm not being able to hear, so when we start to speak, we lean towards our microphones. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the President's agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the President's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, may I, as a counsel, I'm Ralph Stucker, I'm the City Fire Chief, 300 South Broadway. I have Jason Dunn with me, he's the investigator to the State Fire Marshal's Office. Earlier this year, January 25th, while on routine patrol, Officer Hobus noticed a large amount of smoke in the Pine Street area. He started checking the area and everything and come across a structure fire in 700 Block of Centia Street. Was able to notify the dispatch, got the fire department around, but also was able to wake up the mother and young child in the downstairs apartments. Was able to find out that there was a possibility of two people upstairs. When our first crews arrived on scene, we have a structure that was heavily involved, our personnel, we already had two people out of it. They started looking on the upstairs, trying to determine if there was anybody up there. The conditions of the structure pushed them back. Throughout the evening, Officer Hobus and the other police officers stayed there, assisted us in contacting Ripley County, was able to determine that the two occupants upstairs was in Ripley County and was accounted for. But if it hadn't been for him paying attention when he was on routine patrol and looking and finding us, we would've had two fatalities that night. By the time that the fire had been noticed by a neighbor, it had been too late for the people downstairs. We've sent a letter to Chief Whitley, commended him on his actions. We want to give that letter to him tonight. Investigator Dunn also has something from the State Fire Marshal's Office.
Jeff, can I come up here?
On behalf of the State Fire Marshal's Office and Missouri Department of Homeland Safety, I want to issue this word of lifesaving efforts in saving, rescuing, and care infant or Jonathan Banther from the fire on January 25th, 2013. Good job, man.
Thank you very much.
Now, I get all the police officers to come up. It's always an honor to be able to say something about my fellow police officers. As y'all know, I retired after 33 years on the police department. These men had a very stressful job. I didn't realize how stressful it was because I enjoyed doing it until I retired. But it is stressful. Y'all did a great job. And we've had a lot of criminals that talk to us and, "Y'all do different things than they do in my town." Something happens, y'all come running that way, or some of our officers go the other way. And that's what police officers do. People on 9/11, assault firefighters and policemen, they go towards danger and make it a safer place for us to live. Y'all did a fantastic job. There are a lot of information, whereas the members of the City Council, City Pop Bluff, Missouri, are always pleased to recognize those events bring credit from the community. And there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Pauper Bluff Police Department. And nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are recorded each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And since the department recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice to men killed in the line of duty. And the names of these dedicated police public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC. And the members of the Pauper Bluff Police Department play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Pauper Bluff. And it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices made by law enforcement officers. And whereas it is important that all law enforcement officers recognize their duty to serve the public by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas May 15th is Day of the Peace Officer Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, the US flag should be flown and have staffed. Now therefore, it is all that I have to guarantee, Mayor of the City of Pauper Bluff, hereby proclaim May 12th to 17, 2013, to be Police Week in the City of Pauper Bluff, and encourage all residents to honor law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated and courageous service to the community. And witness where I have, on hearing two, set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Pauper Bluff, Missouri to be issued, 6th day of May, 2013. How long do you get up here?
Just a minute.
All right, here we go. I'm gonna get one more now. Okay, thank you. Nothing on the consent agenda? No items on the consent agenda. So we'll move on to the workshop item. Item A, the City Council review a petition for the creation of a community improvement district for seven acres of property located at the junction of Highway 53 and Highway 142. The applicant is Robert Sutton.
Mr. Derrick Brooks is in the audience today, and he, we had met with him earlier last week, and we were discussing this potential community improvement district. I think Mr. Brooks could probably do a better job of explaining than I can, but essentially it's a one cent sales tax they impose on themselves. Anybody located within that seven acre area and should do that improvements and development of that area.
Thank you, Derrick, appreciate it. Your honor, Councilman, trusting, Pam, did you circulate that information so you all got, hopefully, read it, and now we're gonna have the test? CID's are, is one of the best tools the legislature has given to cities to handle development projects. In the past, it was always, we're gonna do a tip, and that way you share in the city or county's revenue. This is imposing an additional revenue on the district to fund the improvements that are being made within it. And as I told everybody once at the meeting, it's probably the best democracy there is because if no one wants to pay the tax, they simply don't have to shop there in terms of the tax. Our petition is calling for state law limits to 1% sales taxes, no more than 1%. Department of Revenue will collect it, it will be paid to the district, the district will be, if you approve, a political subposition of the state of Missouri. They're gonna be subject to reports to the state audit, reports to the city, reports to Missouri Ethics Commission. So we have to do everything that the city has to do in terms of reports. In addition, we have to notify the city because you all be the one that creates it. So I've warned my clients, this is not something due to lightheartedly because you've got a big responsibility because you're handling public funds in the event that you do this. We also are asking for up to a $1 for $100 assessed value property tax to be imposed and within the district. The district has to have a term, and we've set the request at 30 years. If it gets paid off sooner than that, it'd be terminated because you can't collect tax dollars for multiple purpose. So if our purposes hasn't been paid off and satisfied, then we'll have to terminate the district. I'll be, probably the best thing is try to answer questions. I could go through a very lengthy process of explaining. I think I shared with everyone at the meeting the other day how CID's got started. As they observed, prior to 2004, there was only one. The city of Springfield, my hometown, had a CID. All they could impose was property tax. If y'all ever tried to get property tax passed, it's kinda hard to get the voters of that district to go along with it. So they wanted to put a sales tax, and so their lobbyist went to Jeff City and trying to get the law amended. Well, in order to get it passed, if it amended the law, we're all cities, villages can do a CID or counties. So that's how we came about with the CID's that we have today. And I've done one here in Butler County, the county commission did one last year down on the state line. I've done one in Kulin, and altogether about 40 statewide. I'll answer any questions, not only just tonight, but between now and the hearing time, should you choose to set a hearing, I think that's what we're requesting because of the procedures, the city clerk had to review by state statutes that if the petition complied, and she's certified that we have done so. And now she's turning into the City Council, you have to set a public hearing, and it has to be published two weeks prior to the hearing. Anyone can come and say their piece and questions. I will be here for the public hearing to answer questions. And then you cannot vote on it for four days after the public hearing to prove or disprove.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, I want to make sure I'm clear. It's only on these seven acres?
Correct.
And so the sales tax would basically just be Mr. Sutton's property. Anything that Mr. Sutton sold would be one, subject to basically like the TTD out on Highway 1%.
Right, exactly same thing.
And the property tax assessment, I'm not exactly clear.
It'd be taxing itself, you know? It's a mechanism, if you do accounting and tax work, you know, it's a tax deduction that they could use to help fund them the project cost.
The property tax only on that seven acre?
Right.
Because I'm excited about South Pop Bluff, what you've all have done down there.
Well, I think, and I've been doing this for 20 some years, and, you know, if you can get some development there anchored, it's gonna have some impact, I think, on the rest of that. It's a nice area, just needs some updating and...
And there's a lot of property there to expand to the west of there, so.
I do want to make clear, because I get this question a lot, people say, "Well, what's gonna keep them from coming and annexing my property?" You can't do it. The only way under state statutes that you can add property to a district is the property owner must request it. Then the Board of Directors would have to say, "Okay, we want you in," then we have to come back to City Council. So unless, you can't do an involuntary annexation, so.
People wanted to sell their properties to Sutton, they could sell it, and then he'd have to come back with that.
Right. And if anybody, you know, wants out, they have to go through the same process. Right.
That area's long overdue to be, have the development it already has.
I'll share with Doug, the mayor, I hope you find this as a very positive tool, and that some of your other developers in town will look at this tool rather than come in and ask for, you know, tips or additional, you know, financial assistance, because it's a wonderful tool, properly used. I think it'd be a good one.
As someone from South Pop Bluff, I'm very thankful that you're looking into this, and I'm gonna look into this information more. I'll probably have questions for you.
That's fine, you've got my number, I think, on that sheet, so feel free to call me.
All right.
Email or whatever.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Yeah, my understanding from reading your material is your proposal would be to request that the council appoint the board, but aside from that, the city really doesn't have any responsibility or obligations to the district?
No, you're limited by law. You have no debt that they might incur, could be a debt of yourself, the county, or the state, or anyone else. Their actions are totally independent. We are required by law, once you create the district, to send a proposed budget to the City Council 90 days before the beginning of the fiscal year. It's for your review and comments. I'm not sure why the legislature put it in there, because you could say, "We don't like it," and we could say, "Tough," you know? But, you know, they did, so. But we do have to send an annual report to tell you what we've done, plus a copy of every resolution that we do. It's also sent to Missouri Department of Economic Development, and then we also have to report to the state auditor. And I've been busy for the past month getting all the reports into the state auditor for the districts that I oversee.
Is that three-person district commissioner or five? I'm not...
Five. Minimum by law is you gotta have five board members, up to 15. We only have one property owner. So the question was, how do you have five board members? Is there a law, they changed it to when you have less than five property owners, then the property owner can appoint legal representatives up to the level of five, so you have a board. The requirement is they must be 18 years of age and not convicted of felony, is the requirement. They do not necessarily have to live there, around it, or own any part of the property. The only other task the city would have is in our petition we're requesting, is when the terms come up for those board members rather than go through an election, which is silly. You have to file with the county clerk, and you have to do a special election, cost us $2,000 to do an election. We can, but requesting our petition, ask the mayor to appoint the new board members as the thing, the terms expire, subject to council's approval. Now, you can only appoint qualified person, registered voter. If there's no registered voter, you can't. A property owner or a legal representative of a property owner, or a business owner operating a business in the district. I just went through a big battle in one town, that new council came in, they decided they wanna appoint anyone and everyone, we had to go to court to get them to understand they can't do that. You want, I'll take up any more of your time, if there are any questions, but please feel free to call me between now and your hearing. We know when you are gonna set your hearing, yes?
They'll pass the resolution at the next meeting, and then the public hearing should be June the 3rd.
June the 3rd, okay, great. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir. That idea, your second, to move this voting session to be held May 20th?
So moved second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Item B, City Council review of proposed contract for the construction of stormwater detention basins on the southeast corner of the Veterans Administration property. Ray, bring it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you stated, this is dealing with the Veterans property. We have a grant which was submitted last fall and approved, or last spring approved, where we're gonna put stormwater basins in. Two of those basins are designed to go on the VA property, the eastern property line, one of them at the back, close to the back entrance, and the other one at the southeast corner, close to the Island Church parking lot. We didn't want to acquire the property from the VA, but we had to have a revocable agreement with the VA for it to be placed on their property, and that satisfies, the VA satisfies our requirements, also satisfies the community development block grants funding requirements as far as this, you know, setting the property up. So we hope to have this in place and moving later this year, weather permitting. But that's what we have, we actually have some other sites too, but this one is specific to the Veterans Administration property. Questions?
Dennis, I know, how long have we worked on this? Several years now to get this accomplished, though?
I've actually been trying to get various funding possibilities for probably about seven years, lawyer. I thought I had some good proposals and went to Department of Natural Resources, and they all said, "That's a wonderful idea, how are you gonna do that?" So we finally found an agency that was interested in helping us fund it, and so we're very happy with that.
And you know that subdivision there, I've been down when it's really coming raining, and the water will be four, five feet deep on that one street. It would be a big help to those property owners.
They have a hard time actually maintaining their yards in certain areas, you know, through that. Everything along that back line should be received benefit from this. So we've got a good time already, and that was submitted to VA for their review and approval, and so this along with the others we're gonna do should be quite beneficial to the residents, residential areas in general, some martial areas, but mostly this is intended to benefit a higher number of people, so when we get into the Northwood Hill subdivision, such as Pittinger, they will, they should benefit greatly from this.
Yeah, you know, those and the ones we're gonna put over east of 14th Street?
Yes.
Take all those, it really help that flooding down through Bacon Park and Long Street and down through there.
12th Street, Pershing Street, yes, all of those areas. It is, I think it's really a good thing. I mean, I, like I said, I've worked on it for several years to try to find a way to make it happen, and so I'm quite pleased that we are able to...
I want to thank you. I know you and I have talked about this at different times, and thank you for all the work, time you've put in on it. You did a good job on it.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, may I approach?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a new face around here, I've never been here before.
Okay, we just need to give your name and address, please, ma'am.
It's pretty good room, 2622 North 14th Street. So you already probably know why I'm here, because of the storm. Okay. We have quite a problem at 2622 North 14th Street, I and Carol Davis on either side of this drainage ditch. We've been through this about three years ago, and we had quite a fight, but the city, they don't want to do anything at all to help that stormwater that rushes through there, and it's eroding, especially my part of the land, as well as Carol Davis, she's back there with me. The ditch really needs to be cleaned out, the trash in the middle, because the water is eroding on my side of that ditch, to the point that my, all my scrubs is ready to fall in that ditch. And it's within 45 inches at one point to coming into my foundation of my house, and my house is gonna start falling in. And I, it's not me, I guess I'm gonna suggest this, I have seen ditches, especially at the bottom of where the high school is, and you have placed huge pieces of concrete, and they're just stopped to go for that long. I don't know why you can't help us, we're a bubble on fixed income and totally, I'm 83 years old, and I can't afford a retaining wall. Is there anything else you can do? Now, they were out there this morning and put some rock on there. Now, it wasn't a heavy rock, and the first rain that's gonna come through there, it's gonna wash dog away. Now, when they got that rock fixed where that drainage comes through underneath that street, if they get that rock fixed and in for concrete for it, to make it stay, it would help, but that's not gonna help my side of the property that is eroding next to my house. I mean, all the water is flowing from my side, eroding it.
And with, like, big giant rock and concrete, would that be something that...
Yes, that would definitely help, just like you, excuse me, just like you did for the Pauper Bluff High School, that big ditch there. There's great big huge pieces of concrete there.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Redd, I'm gonna come down and...
2622 North 14th Street.
Okay.
And Carol lives right next door to me, the other side of the ditch. Now, her side is built up pretty high, but it's, the middle of the ditch actually needs debris and stuff pushed out of the way, so it would divert that some from my side.
What size of rock did they put in there, just small stuff, or...
It was a joke. Yes, it was a joke. And I went there and talked to the, he was a colored man, a great big gray man, and I said, "Now, this rock, when it comes to great big rain, it's gonna disappear." Now, if you was to pour concrete on top of that rock, it might stay, but you won't believe how that water rushes through there. When I, when I lived, when I moved there 10 years ago, when my husband, my husband died, and it was solid, and that water has washed every bit of that rock away. I mean, Carol had it all fixed, she left thousands of dollars on that big rock, heavy rock, and it's, it's gone.
And I can have, I can have Jeremy Grebel, Street Superintendent, come by and take a look, and I think we can do some stuff at the intersection, at the street intersection, maybe with riprapping, and we can provide material for the ditch after it goes on private property. So we may be able to do some things at the, especially where the tile comes out from under 14th, but I'll have Jeremy come out and look at it, 2622, I used to live at 2626 Linda Lane, which is downstream from where you were talking about, and the same kind of problem with the ditch in my backyard.
Another thing I want to approach you with, at the end of my property, there's 16 feet that the city retained evidently, and there's a huge, it looks like an old well, but I think it's a sewage, I'm not sure, but the water has dug a great big hole by that thing.
Out towards 14th?
Yeah, at the end of my property. It's right at the end of my property. I don't know why it's, it's got a manhole on it, lit.
We may have a sewer even through there, I don't know for sure.
Now, they get the sewage, when they come get it, it's in the middle of the street, at my house, out the street. When, it looks like an old system, but I know it's not, because that, my, the description of my property gives a description, but there's less 16 feet, and that's where that is.
Okay, we sure even...
I would say it has to do with some sewage, I would...
We will definitely be in touch with you and see what we can do to help, everything we can, we will.
But they, the erosion on my side of that street, it's gonna have to be stopped, I'm gonna miss my house.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Jose, I'm gonna help you out. If there's nothing else, the mover motion second, to move the construction of the stormwater detention basin to voting session to be held for May 20th?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries. Item C, the City Council review supplemental agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Pauper Bluff for transportation enhancement fund for the Pauper Bluff Bicycle Carol, Phase One.
Maybe just once, I think we've got Phase Two and Three completed, pardon? No?
Three.
Three completed. We kinda went at this backwards. Phase One is the one that's been working on for the longest, and this is just a supplemental agreement for additional funding and... for additional funding and completion. I think we have all the property acquired now to complete that phase. And this is just a supplemental agreement to do that work between the transportation commission and the city.
Is that part of the trail out Shelby Road up to the side, or, I see a side, is that?
There is. That's subgrade four, Phase Two.
Oh, okay.
No other questions? And a motion second, move this to the voting session to be held for May twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, this is the city council review a historic preservation fund grant agreement for fiscal year two thousand thirteen between the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Historic Preservation Fund, and the City of Popper Bluff.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Last September twenty-fifth, we did a resolution allowing us to submit for this grant. This is a rewrite of the design guidelines, and also some training for our historic preservation commissioners and staff. We will be receiving ten thousand, I had flipped that page and I went back. We'll be receiving ten thousand, six hundred and some dollars from the federal government, and we can match that with ninety-nine hundred local. It's a sixty-fourty match. This is a follow-up to the rezoning of the downtown area to CX three. We felt that since we've done that, we need proper controls on development. We hope we'll be coming in that area down there. So that's part of how we want to go through the rewrite of the design guidelines of historic and district area. Questions? Thank you.
Motion to entertain a motion second, move this to the voting session to be held for May twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council review a contract with the city clerk.
This is something Mayor talked to me about, and essentially, council is responsible for three employees, two of which do have contracts right now under the resolution, being the municipal judge, and the other one being the city manager, which is a three-year contract. What we've asked the city attorney to work up is essentially a twelve-month contract with a new daily require mutual consent on both parties before either there could be a termination or somebody could quit. Essentially, that position is a, it's a record keeper for the city, and this type of arrangement would just create an orderly transition if anything were to occur.
Any questions? Not entertain a motion second, move this to the voting session to be held for May twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council review the temporary closing of Baron Road for municipal utilities and city cable to W Highway.
And this is the area, I think you guys know, have Kobe Robinson, who is contracted doing the work, Matt Hillis, who owns the property. And Matt has provided an aerial view that I think you all have of the property. You can see the barricades that would be just past the utilities, lower drive entrance, and also at W Road. Be a temporary closing of that. They're wanting to do some great work. They own all the property on both sides of this road. There is no, I mean, the sage shed we're seeing here is gone now. There's no houses. They own all the property on either side.
Correct.
And, I'll let you tell them, once you need to, about why you're looking to vote.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and council. What we're, what we're requesting is temporary closure of that road for development. I mean, as you guys know, the THF is, is looking at the other side, trying to develop it. It's been many, many years that they've been working on this. So, we are attempting to move forward and show that Popper Bluff's growing, and get some development going. And in order to do that, we need to temporarily shut down this road, fill it in, and hopefully get some tenants in there and show some movement. So we're just trying to be active and show some movement, and that's what we're looking to do.
I'm curious, what's the reason to close the road? I mean, why would you need to close the road?
To fill, fill the, fill the hole in. That's, that, if you'll, if you look at the, the site plan there, all in between there is approximately ten foot too low, and the dirt, the whole road needs to come up. So in order to do that, we'd have to temporarily close the road.
And, and it may be the relocation of the road, depending on the tenant.
Correct.
They wind up getting, made change. It may come out towards the front. They just don't wanna do that right now and then have a tenant come in and say, "What'd you build a road out there for? You know, we want it back here." So, it is a temporary closing. They do not wanna lose the entrance on either side of this, and they would have a tough time getting back and mowed out if it were permanently closed. So, the road may be relocated at some point in the, in the future when they get a tenant in there. But essentially, it's to develop, like, say, they own both sides, is that the full length of it? And so that really nobody else impacted, other than people that might use that for a shortcut to get to W or whatever. And, and it will wind up being a road again at some point in the future.
Correct. We're just trying to leave the options open for different tenants or potential leadership. You know, depending on what happens across the road with us, you know, we're just trying to leave the options open so we've got options and able to market it to users.
I'm never forgiving property away, but that would be answering my question. I thought maybe that might be a good spot of property for you, because there's, that's a very limited use road anyway right now.
Absolutely.
A shortcut, and not, not liking to give property away. I just could see a potential for, for you to have some good development property there.
It's, it's definitely a benefit for, for Popper Bluff, I mean, obviously.
But, but besides, again, we're not looking to vacate this road.
No, I, I understand. I just could see that is their idea, is that's one idea to move, even if they have to move it north or south, is what you're basically talking about.
Yeah, I mean, either, either way.
It's still a win-win situation.
Correct, correct. Our, our hope is, obviously, it'll, it'll entice some of the other developers in the area to go, "Hey, we better get to moving." Any other questions?
And I guess tonight, all we're looking is approval from the council. It doesn't require ordinance or anything else. If we decided at some point we were gonna vacate it and locate it in another area, then that goes to P and Z, and there's about a two-and-a-half month process right now. They're just wanting to get started and work well.
And we're not, and we're not looking to vacate it. You know, it's, we're looking to potentially move it back somewhere.
Yeah. Possibly the same place. There could be two outlots in the front and then leave. So, there will be a road. This is just a temporary closing for construction.
About how long are we looking at? Because I'm gonna have to face the votes tomorrow.
It, it, there's, there's no timeline, obviously.
I thought it's ninety days.
It could be, it could be a month. It could be a year.
Well, we can put a timeline on it, because we're gonna have to wait tomorrow.
Is that what it is? In the prior year, the estimated time of closure is approximately ninety days?
That's time for construction.
Right.
What Matt's alluding to is?
We don't know where to put it back.
We don't know where to put it back.
Right. That's, that's what, that's why we're looking for temporary closure.
Where are we supposed to tell those folks that live out there that use that road? Or we tell them it's gonna be a year before?
They, they have, and they'll have access completely around it. And if, if we need to put some kind of a chatted road across it, you know, we can, we can do that. Obviously, that wouldn't be ideal, but we can do that if we need to.
The, the access that people would have, obviously, would be right at the utility department there coming out. And it does add maybe overall a hundred or two hundred yards to the trip, but it's not, you know, it's just not a... And it puts them also at a stoplight to get on W up here.
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're not losing, they're not losing access to W or anything like that. They can very easily jump on sixty-seven, right there, they're a W.
There, there's no property owners involved in, inside the area that's gonna be closed.
Correct.
And the other question that just popped into my head, no problem with the fire department? You know, if we respond into the McLean subdivision, I don't get it.
Correct. No, the fire, number two would come out, probably two hundred yards, probably, so.
I knew you'd probably already spoke to the camera about that.
Number two would come out, and that'd be who'd respond, and they would.
Like I said, the, the issue, you know, go back to your, to your question. The issue that we would have, you know, if we were to, let's just say we, we go ahead and do the, do the dirt work, we get it up, and we put a road in the same place that it is. And we get a user that comes in and go, and it's, let's say it's Loews. Let's say Loews comes in and says, "Well, what'd you put that road there for? We don't, we don't want that." Then, okay, we've spent all this money, and they're gonna tear it up. So, the potential is, is to have, have flexibility to be able to change it up and give potentially a bunch of users the opportunity.
Your dirt work looks fine so far. I looked out there.
It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very, very nice.
It already looks, I don't know how to describe how good it looks.
Absolutely. And like I said, it's, it's gonna be very nice, especially coming in Popper Bluff. It's the, it's gonna be the first one you see, so we wanna make sure that we do it the right way. And it's gonna be a potential, obviously, for somebody to come in and really take it and run.
So, my question was, where are you gonna put the road back? You've kinda answered that already. When you do this dirt work and the ninety days has passed, then are you gonna come back to us to say, "We need more time," or we're gonna put a chat road?
The ninety, the ninety days that he was referring to is ninety days for completion.
I understand.
To, to get the dirt work done.
I understand. Now you have all dirt. Are you gonna come back to us and say, "Now we're gonna put a chat road," or we're going, here's where we are with the development?
I guess that's, that's kinda what we're looking at.
I think we need to address it in the ninety days.
We would, we would rather not. We would, we'd rather leave it as is.
I understand. But so you get it all out there, and the ninety days has come to pass, and you don't have it sold.
Right.
Will you need to come back to us to show what your plans are, what you have that works, or maybe extend it another ninety days before you put a road back?
Again, the, the ninety days that's in the, is, is just to let the, let the council know how long it's gonna take for the dirt work to be done, not actually requesting that it's only shut down for ninety days. We're looking for temporary, temporary closure.
But at the end of the ninety days, it's all dirt and there's no road there.
Correct. And we, we would just assume not have any road there and be able to go, "Okay, this is what we have. We wanna be able to sell this," and then come back and go, "Okay, this is where we're gonna put the road." Once it's been sold.
I just feel like we need to address it in ninety days as to what the plan is, what, what progress you are in your process of selling or developing it or whatever. You see what I'm saying? Because otherwise, you have all this dirt work done. You have come to us to vacate it, but it really is still vacated.
We're not vacating, we're not vacating the road.
It's not there anymore, though.
Correct. We're temporarily, temporarily closing it.
Yeah. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think I do.
In this letter?
You want them to come back in ninety days, after the dirt work's done.
After the dirt's all done, and it's just sitting there, then is it gonna be another ninety days or sixty days or something? You know, you won't know.
I'm more than happy to come back in ninety days and tell you where we're at.
Well, in this letter from Kobe Robinson, it says, "The estimated time of closure will be approximately ninety days."
And that's why he brings it up to grade.
I need to tell the citizens that use that road that after ninety days, they'll be able to use that road.
No, there won't be a road there.
There will not be a road there, that's for sure.
But I think at that point, you could come back and tell us where you are in your development.
That, that should, more than happy to do that.
Yeah, just to keep us on, posted on it.
I would also like to say, we, we done test throughout of the detour that will be created going either way by this closure. And if you don't catch a light, it's less than thirty seconds. If you catch a light, it may be two minutes, so.
But it's a safer intersection if you catch a light.
Absolutely.
It's a much safer intersection.
I think it'd be a safer intersection with it gone.
Absolutely.
But I'm just saying, then, then we're in, we're in limbo land because we don't know what your plans are.
Absolutely. I'm, we're more than happy to come back to the council at, at ninety days and go, "Okay, this is where we're at."
That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's not, not an issue.
Before you lay in the asphalt or chat or anything.
Absolutely.
When you get it up to grade, and then there you sit with it, we don't know what you're working on.
Absolutely. We're more than happy to, to keep, to keep the council up to date on what's going on.
I think that would be fair.
Because like I said, that's, that's what, we're, we're looking to improve, not, you know, we're looking to improve Popper Bluff, so.
Well, thank you for that, for trying to keep us progressing.
Yeah.
And...
Only get to make a first impression once.
Yeah.
We'll have all the complaints within ninety days that.
Yeah, we'll have all of them. We'll have your list by then.
It just takes a little bit of getting used to it, so.
It's nothing like what I've grown with, Drew.
The road's gonna be closed until you get to sell it, and then once you sell it, then they'll build a new road.
Correct.
Right. But it might be six months, or it may not get filled back. I mean, we don't know at this point.
Yeah, and we can, we can address that. And like I said, we're more than happy to come back.
But I just think three months is fair enough to, for you all to kinda...
That's fine.
Can I ask, do you have anyone interested in that property? Just curious.
We have shown interest, but nothing that we have really marketed yet, because obviously.
But when you get the road.
It's kinda hard to sell a, sell a hole, you know? We're, you know, you've got a thirty-foot hole, so it's kinda hard to go, "Hey, look at this property." When you come out and go, "Why?"
Not everybody has Kobe's vision.
Once it, yeah, yeah. So, so that's kinda what we're looking at, is once we do get it up to grade, then we've got something to come and go, "Hey, this is, you know, first, that first thing you see when you come into Popper Bluff. You know, you got something to market there."
And we'll, in the meantime, try to make sure who owns that road. We know there's a prescriptive easement.
That was my next question.
We know there's a prescriptive easement through there. That, that's the very worst-case scenario. But there is a lot of, I mean, we took over the maintenance of that road when they, when Katie Lane went on out and actually attached Baron Road. It, it's unclear as to whether Mo does already sold that road. They're here tonight because there is, you know, at least it's been used for a road forever. And so there's at least a prescriptive easement through there. So, that's why really we're just looking, again, if they decided to vacate that, and we'll, we'll know who owns it. If that's the case, because there would be a need for vacation, but there would be a prescriptive easement. But they would be back and go through the whole process with P and Z and, and the council again. Right now, they're just wanting to get the dirt work done on the property.
And that, and that's, that's the main thing that we're looking at right now, is just for a temporary abandonment, so we can get some movement over there on that side of town.
And what you've already done is amazing. Just a start.
You know, we talk about we wanna grow Popper Bluff, and things acted.
Yeah, I mean, imagine, imagine that.
You gotta make dirt.
Well, like I said, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. That's what we're looking for, is just, just to kinda get some, you know, I mean, over the last five years, how many questions have we had? Is it gonna happen? Well, we're hoping that with a little bit of movement, a little bit of dirt work going on, they're going, "Hey, things are happening over there," so.
Again, I appreciate your work on that, because you've developed a spot out there, just a hillside and a couple, three houses, a maintenance shed, and it's gonna be entirely different. And you're absolutely right. If they come in, that's one of the first things they'll see.
It will, absolutely, very nice.
Your efforts on that is very good, and thank you for doing it for the city, because it'll help the city.
Larry Hillis definitely had a vision.
And his investment personally. I mean, he did this all right out of his pocket, so that's huge.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Any other questions? Not entertain a motion second for verbal approval of this request?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. We want the action required item, bill number seventy-five ninety-three. The city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for asbestos removal.
For the first reading, the bill seventy-five ninety-three?
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seventy-five ninety-three, an ordinance accepting a bid for asbestos inspection services relative to the flood buyout project.
Move for second reading, seventy-five nine three.
Second.
Motion second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seventy-five nine three, an ordinance accepting a bid for asbestos inspection services relative to the flood buyout project.
Vote for adoption, the bill number seventy-five ninety-three.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ed Sheer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McBey?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill seventy-five ninety-three adopted. Bill number seventy-five ninety-four, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating an easement for CBS Pharmacy.
Move for first reading, seventy-five nine four.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seventy-five nine four, an ordinance vacating a utility easement located in Block thirteen of Elizabeth Ostermales addition to the city of Popper Bluff, Butler County, Missouri, and more particularly described herein after.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-five ninety-four.
Second.
Motion to the second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number seventy-five ninety-four, an ordinance vacating a utility easement located in block thirteen of Elizabeth Ostermales' addition to the city of Popper Bluff, Butler County, Missouri. And more particularly described herein after.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments?
To clarify, that's just that little square, six, eight, ten square feet of property we were talking about. Community description, just a small piece, correct?
The guide wire was?
I'm sorry.
The guide wire was?
Yes.
Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Carton McBey?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Bill seventy-five ninety-four is adopted. Item CC, the city council, City of Popper Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meetings law. Section six-ten, one-oh-two, one-point-one, point-two, point-three, point-nine, point-eleven, point-twelve, point-thirteen, point-fourteen, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we move to closed session after the city manager's report and a short to recess.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Mr. Bagby. I think you all had the Today in America airing, the schedule update here in Springfield, the Cater area, the month of May. As you're aware, Today in America is the TV program show on about six or seven different national networks. We've got them going throughout the Midwest. Essentially commercials for Popper Bluff. It's about a seven to eight-minute spot. And I think most of you all have seen it. And we will also be airing some on channel two if we're not already. Going out throughout the Midwest, so include those in your packets. I think a flying breakfast at the airport on May eleventh, if he's invited to. It may be a five-dollar cost, but it's a really good breakfast. Mike Smith has nothing to do with cooking, so. Make that clear to everybody. Up up the bluff. And this would be lined up with twenty, I'd have twenty down.
I think nineteen, twenty. We've got three on site over there right now, but one of them's full. So we're, we're running a little bit below what we normally do, but it was still, considering, considering the circumstances, it was a very good kind of, and I appreciate that people cannot help.
A lot of us hear from Sears and, and other places in really a successful event, but consider the weather we had to do it in, so. That's all I have.
I just want to roll short, item. Do you think at some point in time, we can look at the television situation just a little bit? I'm still, Mr. Smith and I know, we've talked about, we're still having kind of a freeze-up occasionally. Mine, I, I've actually purchased three new TVs. I'll have a freeze-up and maybe the voice will go on. Or maybe a freeze-up in everything, or maybe, and, and I don't know if there's something, or a little glitch in our system.
Now, your system is localized and we've actually been to your house and checked and there's no problems anywhere we got outside. So I don't know whether we've got something inside with the original wiring that was put in or what, but.
I'm expressing the same problem too.
Now, we were going to, I get, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you about that because we just had you down on internet only on that. So we'll have to figure out what it is, but I'll talk to you about that.
And I had two, two people over on, I guess that Woodstone, is that the neighbor's home system? Where they put the new lights in. I had two people talk about their having that problem. It, it may just be a little glitch in the system. I just, I didn't know.
Well, it's not yet. Twice a year, you have micro blocking that winds up just being, the curvature of the earth does that. We can't, we can't do a whole lot about that. But it's generally just a short time in the spring and fall that we see, that we see that. Bill, you want to address any of that? I mean, that's, are you getting any complaints?
No, if you got a complaint, I'd recommend calling the utilities and say, I got a complaint, and then we could actually come out and.
Come out while it's going on. Really makes it a lot easier rather than.
I actually purchased, believe it or not, three new TVs just to see.
Is it behind the digital box, are you behind a digital box or just hardwired into your house?
Uh.
You have a box?
Two of my boxes.
And it's happening on all channels? I mean, it's happening on all TVs.
All three TVs, yes.
Well, from your comment that you made the other day, we actually went to the node that surged. And we didn't see any problems in the field, which kind of makes us think it's more your house.
Okay. And that's why I'm asking, so I can explain to these people that maybe they're having.
Again, if they have problems, come call the utilities and we'll go out and address it.
Well, these are over outdated too. I mean, mine's twenty years old. I'm not saying it's not that, that table problem. I'm just, I need to be able to explain to them what, what you all think it might be, so.
Call us up and we'll respond.
Okay.
That's easiest way to handle it. We'll go to the address and, and is it a video problem or an internet problem when you say it's freezing up?
I don't have, I have a wire card, so it'd be a.
Yeah, so you're a video?
Yes, sir.
Another, I would like to remind everybody that we lost a good member of our community that was a community leader and fought hard for a lot of things in town. I believe the visitation starts tomorrow at ten at First Methodist, Ms. Wolfers. She'll be missed and she's done a lot for the city and her family has. Just keep them in your prayers.
If, if I remember right, her and Pauline Hurns were the main push behind getting the bridge across Black River over to Clinton Park. They put in a lot of time and effort and I think raised a lot of money to build that bridge across there. So you're correct, we lost a longtime leader in this community.
Can I bring up, I just wanted to bring up something that I've been kind of working on. I, something that I found when I was out campaigning is that people were concerned about the sidewalks in, in South Popper Bluff. And I've talked to Doug about it. I recently started a constituents page online to where people could tell me what their opinions of it were. And a lot of the feedback I have is that they, they would like to see the maintenance of the sidewalks be taken over by the city. Or perhaps we could make it to where we could apply for grants to get them fixed. So I just wanted us to look at that more seriously because people are really interested in having that done.
We, you know, we've, we've applied for a, say, Rousda School grant and we've denied. We continue to apply for those. This was not in the South End, it was in the, but we can continue to apply for those. You know, there's, there's a tremendous amount of competition. We're actually getting a software program, I think, and you viewed that. You can put in what you're looking for grant-wise and it'll show you every agency that has any kind of possibility of having funds available. So we're looking at that. It really got spurred from downtown Popper Bluff because they are constantly looking for funds to, to fund programs they have. And this grant, I think this software is, and maybe they're around three thousand dollars there. It'll pay for itself in a hurry, I think, just from, from the few that we'll hit on. And the, the grants always sound like just an excellent ideal. There's grants out there. You hear it every. When, when you apply for them, they're difficult to get, aren't they, Bill?
There is a subscription fee for the one you were talking about. But then you're, it, it is, if you're going to utilize grants, which the city of Popper Bluff does on a regular basis, it's probably an affordable expense.
Yeah, it sounds like.
If you weren't going to use it, there's no need to apply for it.
But it does sound like something because we, we are constantly on the lookout for different kind of grant programs. The, um.
No, we came in like.
Sacred Heart School for the.
Sacred Heart School, with Sacred Rousda School.
Right.
And that's, that was within the downtown Vine Street area and all like that. And then we also applied for a transportation enhancement grant in the Main Street Broadway areas. And just late last week, I had something come in from Moda, which was a Tiger discretionary grant. I'm researching it. I think we utilized it once previously, but I'm not familiar with it. So we're, and I've already spoken to Osar Foothills previously about possible grant monies for sidewalk, sidewalk improvements. And it's probably more going to be on like a cost-share type thing, even if we are able to do it. I don't know that the city's going to be able to take up all the cost, you know, the expense of it, unless it was a very lucrative grant, you know, like a ninety, ten grant, which those are hard to get anymore. But, but we research things like that and, but we will look into the other thing that you talked about with the, the subscription fee for the.
I appreciate that. I think it would just make our area look much better as a whole and just, it would attract business. I mean, it.
We'd have a lot of need.
It would look nice.
We also have a lot of need in the area.
It would be safer.
We have a lot of need in the area of handicap accessibility with our sidewalks too, so.
Nothing else? I entertain a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. About five-minute recess and then we'll return.